Hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the secretary. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice and provide a written answer. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our witnesses. I remind the witnesses that as you have appeared previously before this inquiry, you are appearing today under your prior oath or affirmation. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title?
Yes, Marie Jordan. I'm the executive general manager of Network for TransGrid.
Jeremy Roberts, project director for TransGrid.
Thank you. Would I if you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, I would, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to appear this afternoon. As I shared, I'm responsible for the network operations, reliability, system security at TransGrid. I too acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land in which we meet this afternoon, the Gadigal people of the Ura nation, and I pay my respects to their elders past and present. I also acknowledge their continuing connection to country. I've worked extensively in the energy sector for more than 40 years, primarily in North America. This includes executive roles at Pacific Gas and Electric Company, National Grid and Peak Reliability, and as a transmission consultant to the California Public Utility Commission. As CEO of Peak Reliability, my remit included operational oversight of the transmission system for the 14 western states in the US, as well as British Columbia in Canada and Baja California in Mexico. While at National Grid, I also worked closely with my colleagues in the United Kingdom. I was invited to Australia to lend my experience to delivering the transition to renewables. TransGrid is working with the Australian Energy Market Operator on the delivery of nation-critical energy projects identified in the 2022 Integrated System Plan, which is a whole-of-system plan that provides an integrated roadmap for the efficient development of the national electricity market over the next 20 years and beyond. Its primary objective is to optimise value to end customers by designing the lowest-cost, secure and reliable energy system capable of meeting any emission targets determined by policymakers at an acceptable level of risk. We have been following the inquiry, and I'd like to again acknowledge the concerns of landowners and local communities. I'd also like to provide clarity for the committee on some of the assertions made over the past few weeks. Those will be focused on bushfire, delivery of the ISP and HVDC undergrounding. We recognise the long-lasting devastation of the 2019 and 2020 bushfires. I have experienced personally the tragedy of wildfires, and I know they have a profound and lasting impact on landowners, businesses and communities as a whole. I would like to update the committee on concerns raised in the testimony in relation to TransGrid's role in those bushfires. TransGrid has a liaison officer in the Rural Fire Service Incident Management Team at the time of these events, for a purpose of providing advice related to the impacts and risks of various strategies in relation to the transmission infrastructure. As network operator, responsible for keeping the grid operating safely, this also extends to the impacts of fire transmission infrastructure and preventing power loss for the more than eight million people across New South Wales. Our officer acts as a conduit between the RFS Incident Commander and the TransGrid Control Centre, specifically in relation to queries from landowners suggesting TransGrid did not agree to a request from the RFS to turn off our lines. Our records indicate, in relation to the Dunn's Road fire which burned within the Snowy Valley local government area from the 28th of December in 2019 to the 15th of February in 2020, our control centre received five separate requests to de-energise overhead lines, and all of those requests were actioned. Last week, TransGrid met with RFS. My colleague Jeremy Roberts, who is joining me here today, was at last week's meeting. He will be able to provide you with an update on that meeting if you wish. Managing bushfire risk. For all major projects, our planning, design, construction and operation takes bushfire risk into consideration every step of the way. That includes risk assessments and mitigation, constraint mapping, vegetation controls and engagement with emergency services and local communities. We also provide fire truck access roads which assist the RFS in both access and fire breaks. Around 50% of our direct maintenance expenditures each year relate to mitigating bushfire risk. This includes both veg management and our asset condition programmes. On the delivery of ISP projects to ensure energy security, I just need to reiterate the criticality of HumLink project in the context of the energy transition, not just here in New South Wales, but the entire eastern seaboard. HumLink is an actionable project in the ISP to be delivered by 2026. Any delay to this delivery could put security and reliability of the electricity network at risk, and that supplies millions of Australians. Let me be clear on what that would look like. Even if the AER believed undergrounding was a viable option for HumLink, it would require a complete reset in terms of route selection, ritte process and environmental assessments, material orders and finding contractors capable of delivering an HVDC line and inevitable delays that would follow. In addition to construction of underground, it's a significantly longer process. We would expect a delay of approximately five years. The quicker we transition to renewable energy, the quicker all consumers in the cities and in the regions will have energy security and access to lower-cost energy. Finally, the inquiry has also discussed the merits of high-voltage, direct-current underground lines. There are also technical aspects to consider when designing and constructing transmission infrastructure, including the voltage level that's being transmitted, the distance of the line being installed, the terrain and environment that is crossed. While there has been a discussion on dimensions of a trench and the methodology, we have brought photos of both Nordlink and Sudlink, having been part of the discussions in the hearings. Long-distance underground transmission lines are most often HVDC and are designed to deliver areas of high concentration of generation to low points. There are good examples in both Australia and around the world that demonstrate the benefits of underground transmission lines and the use of HVDC. It's commonly used for offshore wind farms. It is a proven alternative for underwater cable. HBDC transmission is known for its ability to transmit power efficiently over long distances, connecting remote generation sources to areas requiring the generation. But HBDC lines do have limitations. Transmission projects, including HumLink, which form part of the national electricity market superhighway, require a high-voltage alternating current transmission line that will allow connection points for generation as well as new loads. At a minimum, there would be three HVDC converter stations adjacent to traditional substations, one at the beginning of it in the Sydney region, a connection point at Snowy, and a new station in Guja near Wagga. Converter stations globally have a reliability of about 98%. This is much lower than our current reliability expectation in New South Wales of 99.998%. The stations are nearly a half a billion dollars each. To construct these additional stations, those costs are borne by the consumers. Our role is to provide the Australian Energy Regulator the most viable option for its assessment that includes the least cost to eight million consumers in New South Wales. We are committed to improving our community engagement processes. We are also committed to leaving a positive legacy in the communities where we have our transmission projects, and we want to continue to work with communities to minimise the impact of critical infrastructure and ensure landowners are properly consulted and compensated. And that's my remarks, thank you.
Thank you. Assuming there are no further remarks from Mr. Roberts, we'll move to questions now. So moving to the opposition members for questions first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm on Virgin Link.
Sorry, Wes, we can't hear.
Your audio's not great, Wes.
Sorry?
Your audio's not great, if you can speak directly into your...
Oh, apologies. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was just saying that I was meant to be with you this morning, however, sorry, this afternoon, but my flight was cancelled this morning, so I'm joining you via AV Link. My first question is, leading out of your opening statement with Jordan, where you said that it's the responsibility of TransGrid to provide the lowest cost to eight million consumers, what is your requirement to providing this system, which perhaps leads to an unbearable cost to those impacted residents, where the line is going to go cut through their properties and their communities?
Well, I fully understand the impact and have empathy for each one of those property owners, but when we look at transitioning the system to the renewable portfolio and the timelines we have ahead of us, and we are looking at the cost for all consumers, we are looking at both the people in the cities and in the rural regions, we are looking at how we bring the lower-cost renewable energy to all of the Australians in New South Wales.
I've just switched microphones, I don't know if that works better?
Much better.
Okay. While I accept that, there's no doubt that the cost to the landholders is greater than the bill price that is going to impact metropolitan areas. And I think that this is part of the issue that landholders have, is that, in effect, what I've calculated had to be about eight dollars per household, it being the difference between the bill with underground versus HumLink as proposed at the moment, your impact on those landholders and the communities is going to be much greater than that. So you're asking a small number of people to bear the load of this project in order to provide a cheaper power bill. Does that not have, do you not have an issue with that and the way that that sits with TransGrid's social position?
I'll answer that one. So absolutely, the landowner that is impacted is greatly impacted by that. Part of our requirements are that we are bound to follow the Just Terms Act through our regulated process, as well as assess the injurious affection of the landowner to ensure that they are compensated. Now noting, financial compensation is only one element, but the financial compensation is to take into effect the land uses and the impacts that we have on that land. So that is one element. The other element is the timing. So to go for the underground scenario, as Marie mentioned before, the delay to five years means that consumer will incur higher costs for an additional five years, so limiting the access of more renewables to come into the network, as well as increasing the risk to reliability for the network as well. So as much as the consumer bill may seem like a small impact using the numbers you used, it is the timing component to it, the loss that the consumer will feel for those extra five years, as well as the compensation regime that we're bound to under the Just Terms Act, as well as the strategic benefits payments that the government has put in place.
I'll come to the timing a little bit later in the questioning, but for the moment, what I want to do is I want to stay on the issue of impacts to landholders. Now, in circumstances where you have the Just Terms Act defining how you will compensate impacted landholders, do you believe, Mr. Roberts, that that is an adequate recognition of the impacts and a proper and just settlement for the impacts that you'll be imposing on those landholders?
I believe it's following the requirements that we have to, that we're bound to...
I understand the requirements issued, what I'm talking about is do you believe that it is appropriate?
So I would put to around 50% of our line has an existing easement in place already, so it is an impact again on those landowners, so it is greater impact in those areas for those people. I've had anecdotal from landowners that have gone through the process, that believe once they've gone through the process, understanding the compensation regime and the injurious infection of how it affects their lands, that they were fairly compensated through that process. However, I note that for some landowners, there is no compensation value that will equal the impact that they will feel on their generational farming.
Well, Mr. Roberts, I'd like to meet the landholders that you refer to, that you believe are happy with the compensation, because perhaps there's one or two issues here. If it is that landholders are happy with what happens in relation to compensation, you're perhaps not explaining it right to the people, particularly around the Armidale and Tumit areas, because it seems that nobody there is happy with what is on offer in relation to the detrimental impacts and impacts that you are paying on their land. So if you believe that what you say is correct and that people are happy, then you perhaps have a selling problem, because I can tell you that nobody came to us during either of those inquiries or either of those hearings and said, "We are happy with what's proposed."
Yep, and I acknowledge that there is a lot of people that are not happy with it.
Right. So in that circumstance, I'll come back to my original question on this issue, which was, do you believe it is appropriate? Or do you believe you've explained it well?
There's a couple of elements to it. The engagement process requires us to have an individual land valuer engaged, independent of our processes, that will undertake that assessment and undertake the assessment of injurious affection, so they do that compensation component. To the emotional component, I can't comment whether I think it's sufficient or not, because it's dependent on the individual landowner of what monetary value they would put on that process. I would say that the state did put together the strategic benefit payments, which we lobbied hard for to have that in place to increase the benefits for our affected landowners.
So in the circumstance that perhaps you have a landholder that is seeking to not have their land impacted in the way that you will with the 500 KVA lines, the requirements to perhaps build crane pads in order to lift those towers and the actual impacts during construction, but also once built, what can you offer around ameliorating those concerns other than money?
So part of the process during the engagement, we set up the property management plans, which are bespoke and individual and tailored for the individual landowner, which step through how we will be on their site, so the durations, the transient nature of, we'll be there for survey, then we'll leave, we'll be back again during the access track building, again transient, and then through to the construction foundations and the towers, and then finally stringing. So there's a couple of different times when we will be there and time when we won't be there, so it is not a continuous construction phase. And through that process and the property management plan, we engage with the landowner to find suitable times and suitable processes during the construction, understanding the impacts that we will have, to try to work through with them. That forms part of the options agreement and options deed for the easement that we're acquiring. So we try to work with the landowners and our contractors through that process.
We keep hearing the word consultation process. I think one of the criticisms...
Sorry, Mr. Fang, I'm struggling to hear you.
Oh, apologies. I'll see if I can hold that a little bit closer, I'm not sure if that works better. We keep hearing the word consultation used. Now, what I note about this is that consultation, I think, by anyone's definition would be that you are seeking engagement in both an informative but also seeking response in relation to that process. I think one of the criticisms that I've heard is that basically TransGrid arrive and, in effect, lay out what they're going to do. It's less consultation, more information. Where there is pushback in the consultation phase, like you've just referred to in relation to the landholder impacts, the consultation that you had, what changes have you or did TransGrid make on the back of that feedback?
So through the process, we've had 28 combined consultative group sessions along the whole transmission route, we've had 44 community events, 10,000 interactions with affected easement holdings through the process. So there's been considerable amount of engagement, and we're happy to provide some more practical information. So during the route refinement...
But other than engagement, what I'm asking is what changes have been implemented off the back of that 10,000 number of consultation poster faces on the show, because I really haven't seen a lot.
So through that process, in individual landowners, 77% of route refinements on an individual's landowners, we've accommodated and moved. So where we're impacting a landowner, we've discussed, and we've actually micro-sided changed towers, changed routes, on the back of consultation with the landowners. So that's about, I think, 20 odd out of 30 requests on a individual landowners to move. We're going through the process right now at a route refinement on a community-led consultation, where they prefer a different route, and we're in the final stages through our constraints mapping and evaluation, then looking at proposing to move that route, and that's in those final stages. So we are listening and taking on board the route refinement process through our consultation.
Well, that's a very interesting answer, Mr. Roberts, because one of the properties that we went to see out just to the north of Tumit, and I'm just trying to remember the name of the road, it was actually where Dunn's Road fire was anyway, the property had a set of maps, and we sort of sat at the top of the hill looking over the valley, where they said that there had been discussions with TransGrid about the possibility of moving the line, and it was to head further south, instead of going straight through the valley and through people's properties. And it wasn't until the maps were published that they realised that you basically kept straight through the property that we were inspecting. So where there's been a clear position of those landholders to say to you, "We don't want it to go this way, you can, you know, come back and go this path," and there's been a lot of discussion then, that yet they discover when the maps come out that all that consultation's been rejected. How does that appear?
So I'm not aware of that exact scenario, Mr. Fang, but happy to take that one on notice to understand the exact scenario. However, we undertake the constraints mapping, we consider the environmental impacts through our route selection, we consider the cost determining on which route selection we undertake, and then also the time to do that change as well, also impacting how many landowners. So if there is 10 landowners in one area and 10 landowners in the other area, is it less of impact or just a different impact for different people? So all of those factors are considered in, but on that exact example, I'll take it on notice to consider what feedback should have been provided.
And I'll give you some details as well, and I understand it was a bit vague, but apologies, it's been a bit of a rush to get resorted into this position after this morning. Just in relation to costings, now, we discovered after TransGrid's last appearance that the $3.3 billion thereabouts figure had escalated to around $5 billion. Have you had the opportunity to further refine that costing for HumLink with overhead lines? And could you provide the committee with some, I guess, guidance as to what you believe that will be? And then I'll come to the cost of undergrounding.
Sure. So our latest figure for the HumLink project is $4.89 billion in real dollars as of FY2023, and that was published last Friday by AEMO.
Okay. Now, I noted in the opening statement that there were discussions around the materials that have already been ordered. How much has already been ordered in relation to the material costs for the overhead system?
So there's a couple of elements to it. There's been a lot of development that's undertaken to get it to the phase there is, so there's a lot of costs incurred through the development phase, route refinement, property easements. We have acquired quite a few option agreements throughout the process and land, the EIS developments to the point where we're ready to go on public exhibition next month, so quite a lot of development works. From a long lead equipment perspective, we've ordered 16 high-voltage transformers and reactors, as well as we're very close to ordering the conductor and the transmission line steel will be ordered very soon as well. So all in requirements to meet the transition timeframes. We are bound by AEMO's ISP for mid-2026 to be energised, therefore we've had to commence procurement through the process of development, so...
I'm just going to ask the Chair how much time I've got left in the question, because I've got the clock visible to me.
You've got just under 19 minutes, Wes.
Beautiful, thank you so much. Okay, so we're at about $4.89 billion. Do you know how much TransGrid has spent in relation to the procurement at this stage?
I'll come back with the exact figure, Wes, so I don't give an approximation. Mr. Fang, sorry.
No, appreciate that. So we've heard from some electrical, I guess, network experts... Um, so we've heard from, uh, some electrical, uh, I guess, network, um, experts, um, during the Tunnet hearings, uh, that the, the costings that are available, um, as best guess, uh, for the HVDC, there's obviously the figure that was, uh, tabled before the committee of about $11.5 billion, which was the, uh, the figure that was led to by the, um, the, the consultation group and transgrid oversighting, where, um, the CEO indicated that he doesn't believe that he could find anyone to build it for that price. Now, we heard testimony at the Tunnet inquiry that it could potentially be less than that. So somewhere in the region, um, the boggy is around figures of around $9 billion. That would put it at less than half, um, the, uh, what's your, uh, less than the double figure that you have for, um, for the overhead. Have you done any further work in relation to the cost of undergrounding? And have you, um, uh, advanced, uh, the, I guess, the understanding of HVDC, given that we were advised that there have been in recent times developments on the technology, uh, that's implemented?
So I'll, I'll take, I'll talk to the specifics of the, um, the underground study for HUMLINK and I'll pass to Marie for the more general one. But so, um, similar to our cost going up, we look at inflation and then a real cost increase of 26% on top of, of ours in just the construction industry. We're seeing 30% increases in construction across the board. So, um, applying inflation to that $11.49 billion would put it at $13 billion at the lower end and up to $17 billion at the high end. So we still stand by that being the lower end. Um, refinement for the route, um, to go through that process, we need to, um, consider the, the whole route again for the project. Um, that's a whole new, um, round of landowners, um, route refinement, um, EIS, the constraints, um, mapping of where we would be, um, undertaking the line. Um, the topography comes into account and is very critical when you're looking at your underground. Do you have the tunnel where it is too steep to trench? Can you access it with trenches? Um, so, so a lot of work would need to do to refine that process, hence why it is the large range from say 13 to 17 is because depending on your trench, your topography, if you're tunneling anywhere greatly, um, significantly increases your HVDC costs.
And on a general point too, when I was listening to, uh, the Tunnet, um, inquiry, the comment was made that that was what they felt was a bit under for the cost of cabling. They were very specific that the HVDC converter stations were not included in that number. We would need three and they're a half a billion dollars each. And the substations we have planned and the substation equipment that's planned would also be installed. So it would have to come up and convert and go into a substation and collect in additional energy from different lines at those locations. So you end up with the, with the redundancy of both the converter station and the substation, and those were not factored in based on the comments made in that inquiry.
Right. So I, I think I have, um, I think I have a bit of a, an understanding now of, uh, some of the more technical aspects which are precluding undergrounding as you, I guess, uh, articulating this argument. But some of the other evidence that we've heard in relation to undergrounding is that, um, if you're seeking to do the whole line underground, then certainly HVDC is, um, a, a better, um, option because of the efficiency, et cetera. But there is the cost of, um, the, the installation. But you can, my understanding is, um, for certain, uh, certain distances, underground AC high voltage pads for around 40 kilometres, is that, would that be a reasonable, um, uh, assumption to make, Mr. Joe?
For AC, it can be undergrounded for that approximate length. Um, but a very good example is one that was done by Southern California Edison. I was actually acting as an auditor for the California Public Utility Commission and looking at that section, which was about 40 kilometres. It was incredibly expensive to underground AC. It was the first underground 500 KV AC in the US. It's not typical, um, it's not cost effective and it requires a lot of equipment. But yes, feasibility wise, you can do it. But it typically dwarfs the cost of the overhead much higher than the numbers that are the three to 10 times. It would probably be closer to the eight to 10 times rather than the three that you get for HVDC.
Right. So in circumstances where, um, the community is looking for you to underground these cables so that you don't have the fire risk, the amenity impacts, the, uh, the, uh, the other issues that come around, um, the, the wide, um, easement issues and just the general, um, I guess, uh, gen- general opposition to having these overhead power lines. Um, and you, you rightly say, you know, there is a greater cost to this HVDC system, there are limitations around the system as it's, um, uh, you know, with converter stations and being able to tap in and out and redundancy and the, the safe, sorry, the, the, the fallback of, you know, 98% versus 99.9. I'm, I'm understanding all of those issues, but what about the possibility of something like a hybrid where you have overhead for part of it and underground where people have an absolute opposition to it? And then, you know, where, where there's less of a, uh, an issue or it's on public land, you can go back to overhead. Is this, is that not something that, that is a feasible solution that, that we try and, try and work in with people? Because I've got to say that what I'm, what I'm getting the sense of is that, um, you've spoken about the, the need for, um, you know, if you were to go back to HVDC, further planning, um, further environmental impact studies, further studies, et cetera, et cetera. But perhaps that all should have been done at the start of this project when it was dismissed. Um, perhaps now, given the timeframe and, uh, you're pushing for this, you know, construction to start now, that if you're going to impact on people, that we perhaps need to try and make the plan work in either circumstance.
I have not seen multiple underground to overhead on a single line. That is something I haven't seen. I don't think it's feasible. When we looked at HUMLINK from the very start, as we do with all projects, you have to look at what's the right construction, both for where you're going, the terrain and the cost. Those have fallen out early on based on looking at the most cost efficient design. We are building, what is it, um, in the ISP 10,000 kilometres of line? So to think about that as a whole and to think about the cost implications that that could create if we set precedence on doing underground to overhead at such a high dollar value, I think that the cost wouldn't be prudent for the consumers when they're, we're trying to make this transition. And even a short distance of underground will create a new scenario where you're looking at the route that you've chosen and the ability to be able to put that line underground, new EIS studies. So even a short piece is a very different change to the project and would cause delays.
This is, I guess, part of the problem that I have in relation to that rhetoric around, um, the, the, the design and the impacts and the cost, et cetera, et cetera. Now, yes, I appreciate that the, um, probably the standard way of constructing a 500 kVA line would be using overhead system, um, you know, um, AC high voltage, uh, as is proposed. However, um, where there are cost implications for residents and their power bills, there is a lifestyle and, well, not only a lifestyle, but it's a, it's, it's an impact on so many aspects of those impacted residents. It's, it's an impact on their mental health, it's an impact on their land values, it's an impact on the way that they can use their land because of, uh, you know, one, having the tower, two, the easements, three, the bushfire risk, et cetera. Um, and while I appreciate some of the arguments around bushfire that you've, you've presented, for those farmers that perhaps use aerial spraying, um, or, you know, looking to have, um, you know, air protection, um, in case of a bushfire, those five 75 metre lines, those high voltage lines preclude a lot of that happening. Now, they're bearing the total cost of that, the total cost, and they don't want it on their land, but it's being forced on them so that you can provide a cheaper power bill to residents. Do you not see that there might be something fundamentally wrong with that, uh, with that idea that, that we're going to, um, impact these people for generations, you know, create permanent, um, issues on their land so that we can provide people cheaper power bills?
Mr. Fang, I've been at this a very long time and I don't think any company is excited to encumber someone's property. But when we're looking at transmission lines, I've done them in California in some of the very challenging areas to bring these lines through as well as the North East. It's, it's, you, I have empathy for the landowners, but I also realise we have to provide reliability, security of supply, and we have to serve the broader population. It's not comfortable, it's a fact. And looking at, it's just not cost, as Jeremy said, it's timing, making sure that we meet the timeframe for some of the things that are cha- that are challenging the system today, the timing to make sure we have adequate ability to serve the load and bring in more generation into New South Wales. So it's never an easy conversation. I can't quantify it. It's not my position to quantify it. My position is to look at how do we resolve for the broader New South Wales, security of supply, reliability and the least cost option for consumers as a whole?
Um, I believe I've got about five minutes left, is that right, Chair?
Yeah, just under.
Just under, thank you. Um, I will turn to timing now, which I said I would do earlier. Um, what, um, I guess we've seen is that i- in effect, HUMLINK is, uh, was proposed, uh, to provide the ability to link the, uh, Snowy 2.0 project, um, to the, uh, more, uh, populated areas and transmit that renewable energy to and from. And also that, uh, I guess now it's being used to link in, uh, some of the other, um, renewable energy zones and provide that feed link. Would that be a fair assumption?
As to the need, Mr. Fang, of, of HUMLINK, what the driving need is?
Oh, just, yeah, the reason it was proposed initially, like it was, I guess, HUMLINK was proposed to get the power out from Snowy 2.0 and then, you know, later on, I guess it was, you know, used to provide that interconnection between, you know, the residents, et cetera.
Sure. So I think, um, um, prior to HUMLINK, um, was Project Energy Connect, which is under construction now, which brings connections from South Australia to Wogga, um, and picks up that real rich renewable energy source of the South West, um, which is also the proposed future, um, res location of the South West, New South Wales. So, um, the requirements for HUMLINK are to bring the South West renewables, um, across from Wogga, um, and up to Sydney, um, up to Benneby, as well as, um, bringing that renewable across to the Snowy so that it can pump back up and then discharge when their renewables aren't going to use it as a battery and bring that up to Sydney as well, as, as well as strengthen down into South, into Victoria as well. So part of the integrated network, um, there's, there's multiple needs for it.
So in relation to that then, um, given that, uh, we've seen, well, probably the first question I should ask is what is the timeframe from the start of construction to having HUMLINK completed, um, in your estimates?
So our estimate is still mid 2026 as required by AEMO under their ISP. The la- latest published in 2020 was to have it by mid 2026 or earlier for completion. Our current timeframe is to meet that requirement.
Okay. So construction sometime later in the year to finish mid 2026.
So, um, I can step through the approvals process if you like.
Oh, no, no, just, just, just talking about construction time. So we're talking about three years to construct the line as proposed. Does that, would that be a, if you would start digging dirt now?
We cannot do construction until the EIS is completed, which is currently forecast for mid 2024. We will then do enable works while the management plans are under place and full construction, um, after camps or other arrangements are set up will be from the start of 2025 through to mid 2026.
Okay. So construction time, if all the approvals are in place, is about a year.
Year and a half.
What, year and a half. What is the great rush, given that 2.0 is, I guess, in no man's land at the moment? And I think they're talking about a completion with a, you know, a 23 something, something, no doubt. Um, you know, there's, um, there's no rush there and the energy, uh, rich, uh, sort of South West area, as you described it as, um, is, uh, whilst online, is it, is it going to materially create a difference in people's power bills if it's linked in, um, by mid 2026? Have we not got time to get this right, um, and make sure that if we're doing this project, it's done with the, uh, least of, uh, impact for the landholders who are on the route?
So we've confirmed that with AEMO, the market operator, that, um, with Snowy delayed, HUMLINK is more critical, um, to increase the resilience of the network, um, without the, um, Snowy coming on as soon as it was. Um, that resilience, um, requirement for the network is even more critical, um, especially that connection from Wogga through to Benneby, um, to improve that. Um, it allows then the PEC, the Project Energy Connect, um, to come through and bring that power through from South Australia, as well as relieve constraints in that South West region of the network that currently exist. So therefore increasing your ability for renewables to come onto the network, um, which allows for, um, a more competitive market with more renewables being able to access, um, the market.
So, so in effect, this is really about the fact that because we're losing, uh, a number of the coal-fired power stations out of the Hunter region, that you're going to have to bring power from somewhere else. That's why HUMLINK is, is, uh, required now so that you can move that power up because, um, we're not going to have enough power in New South Wales. Is that effect, in effect, what you're saying?
Uh, um, Mr. Fang, I'm saying that the network strength improves as, as coal-fired generation across the whole grid is, um, retiring, um, as we transition to a greener renewable future, more transmission lines are required to strengthen the network and reshape where our generation sources are coming from.
Well, I'd rather have a more chilled, reliable power system frankly, but, um, it would seem to me that, um, if we were to keep, uh.
Wes, your time's up, sorry.
Okay, well, I was just asking a last question. Uh, if those coal-fired power stations were kept operating.
Wes, your time has expired, sorry, it expired a while ago.
Then we wouldn't need HUMLINK.
I think there's a mute, you can just pop it on. Okay, we'll move, we'll move now to the, uh, crossbench for questioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I know I've already talked a little bit, oh, thank you for, for coming back today. Um, I know we've talked, um, a little bit about consultation and, um, the fact that there was a lot of feedback, um, from the community that they feel, felt like there wasn't genuine consultation. Um, one stakeholder described the process as a charade, um, and many others said that they didn't feel that they had been. that they had been listened to or consulted only after the decision had already been made. Um, in light of that feedback from this inquiry, I'm just wondering what steps TransGrid, um, if any, will be made to ensure that better and more genuine consultation, um, about these projects is done in the future?
Um, so, thank you for the question, I, I agree that at the start consultation, um, was not the best. We, um, commissioned an independent, um, report, um, by Rod Stowe, um, that reviewed our consultation methodologies and provided a list of recommendations. Um, TransGrid took on all of those recommendations to improve our consultation. Um, some of those benefits include having, um, individual land liaison officer for each landowner, um, as well as a placement, um, community, um, officer as well to help provide that genuine one-to-one relationship so that landowners, um, could understand the process, um, as well as increasing our, um, committee groups, um, and across the whole network. So, um, we look to, um, seriously, uh, improve our consultation, um, took on the feedback from an independent report, um, and have implemented that process.
And have you had any feedback since then that, that people are feeling like they've been in part of this process more? Or, um, are you unaware at this stage whether it's made any difference?
Um, I suppose I can't, I, I won't comment on, on, on the general, um, you know, sentiment of different landowners. Um, we work closely with, um, Andrew Dyer, um, to, to ensure that our, our property and our, um, land processes are up to best practice, um, and, and provide the property. We are, we are, um, tracking to plan of, of options agreements being in place, um, and, and consent to enter across the route, um, is improving. So we are making progress on, on, um, engagement and land option agreements.
Um, and will those, um, changes be implemented in future projects?
Yeah, absolutely, so we've taken that on board to ensure that, um, out of the projects like V and I, Sydney Ring, um, it has a, as a improved, um, community consultation process.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to touch on, um, that, that key concern that was raised by Wagga Council in regards to um, acquiring the one point eight kilometre waste facility in the area. Um, so the council considered it a valuable asset, um, and, um, that, that, um, they argued strongly that it shouldn't be included in the HUM Link. Um, are you able to explain why, um, the decision was made over the objection of council and others in the community to continue as is?
Um, so I believe that was on the Project Energy Connect project, not HUM Link, that waste facility. Um, we are bound to follow the just terms requirements, um, and have an independent valuer assess the value of the land and follow those requirements, um, rather than go off, um, potentially what someone else thinks the land is worth, we have to follow, um, the requirements of the regulator. Um, and that's where we've come to our assessment, um, taking into account, um, use of the land, um, into that assessment.
And what was the difference between how, how, um, it was valued, um, through TransGrid versus the, the council?
Um, I will, I will come back to you on, on, on that one.
Yeah, and we really shouldn't be commenting because that could be subject to court proceedings.
Right, okay.
Was that the Wagga or the Wagga Council?
Wagga.
Wagga, Wagga.
Sorry, Miss Fager.
That's all right, that's okay. Um, uh, in, in one of your answers, uh, to the questions on notice, um, that were sent through, um, you stated that one of the variations to the route of HUM Link was to go through Green Hill State Forest to minimise the impacts to private landowners. Um, can you tell me, um, what assessment was done, um, if any, to determine the impact on animals or the environment by going through the state forest instead?
Um, so that is still, um, being assessed, so we look at the constraints, we overlay, um, what known, um, so, so we undertake the surveys to understand, um, what, um, animals or, you know, flora and fauna are in place and that's part of the assessment. Um, upcoming very soon, we'll start our spring surveys in that area, um, to assess that, um, which means that we have to walk the whole route, um, and assess, or where the presence should be, we will assume presence, um, until it's proven that it's not through that area and we will continue to do that right through until construction.
Okay, and, and when is that expected to be completed, that process?
Um, so spring surveys will happen, um, in the upcoming spring. Um, and if that decision is made that that is the preferred route, which we're still in the final negotiations, um, that would be, form part of an amendment, um, into the EIS process.
And what, uh, would there be a potential, if, if you saw that there was a significant impact to, to animals or the environment going through there, what are the other options then at that stage, if it hasn't been solidified at this point?
So, uh, we've got two routes at the moment in present, um, and we're going through, that is part of our assessment right now to consider, um, the impacts, um, environmentally, landowners, cost, duration, et cetera. All of those are taken into account as part of our assessment.
Um, have any variations to the route been made, um, on, uh, the impacts on animals or the environments to date? Have you sort of made any decisions that this was going to be too, um, impactful in certain areas?
So very early on in the, on, in the route selection process, um, that, that forms, um, the high tier requirements of, of constraints of, of where we can avoid and also always trying to avoid and then mitigate, um, impacts to the environment. So that, that was definitely formed very on, in the route selection process, um, to refine the route.
Um, so I just mean, you know, where the, where we were actually sort of, um, or where, where you're deciding where the route will be, has there been any assessments where you've actually said, actually, we can't go through here because of the impact on the environment, rather than a general consideration?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that on notice and come back and give some examples to that.
Thank you. Um, and, and can you give me a bit of, just a little bit of an understanding on, I mean, obviously there's going to be a whole range of impacts, no matter where you go, if you're going to go on to private landowners or if you're going to go through state forest. Um, how do you balance those and, and what sort of weight are you giving to the balances, to things like the environment or to the animals? Um, or to, you know, land value and things like that, for, like, where does that all sit in regards to the overall decision?
So, so we go through that multi-layered, um, constraints mapping when we look at every route refinement. Um, we go through and assess how many landowners, um, the cost, um, the impact to environment, um, is, is it a compar- comparatively or is mine, and biosecurity, sorry, biodiversity offsets is a large calculation in that, so what type of vegetation it is, um, so how much clearing would be required, the bushfire risk, impact to land, it's, it's all part of the, the assessment, um, which undergoes, um, by multiple team members and SMEs in the different areas to ensure that it's given um, the valid and appropriate, um, route selection.
Um, I believe that the public consultation on the environmental impacts report is due, um, to occur later this year. Um, I, do you expect that there'll be variations to the route based on, um, animal impacts and environment from that report?
Um, potentially not in the public exhibition phase, um, so we've, um, surveyed seventy percent of the route where we've walked the route and undertaken the surveys. Um, so, so that's what we've assessed it on at the moment. For the other areas where we haven't, um, made it, we've assumed presence in those areas. So we, we go through that process to ensure that it's assumed that it's there, not that it's not there. Um, and then once, um, we have access, that is when we will undergo and walk the line and undertake that assessment throughout. Um, and via that process, um, then we'll be into mitigating, so either micro-sighting towers or avoiding, or in the worst case, having to, to pay the offset for where we've had to. Um, and, and if it was an animal, obviously you go through that process of relocation, um, rather than, if, if habitat was to be destroyed.
And, um, in, in which case, what, 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 what do you, if you don't think that the public consultation will sort of lead to any changes in, in the route, um, what do you sort of think, what, what aspects of the public consultation will you consider in regards to the project overall?
Um, sorry, so if, if there is under the public consultation that there is, um, found to be some requirement to change route, we would, we would obviously assess that, um, and there's an opportunity through the amendment process where we would consider if there's taking on feedback from the DPE or consultation, if there's some requirement to refine, um, or, or change some elements of there, depending on the size and the, and the nature of, of what we would have to do. Um, we've done an assessment of a two hundred metre corridor, um, so, so there is some flexibility within there where, where if there was a constraint, um, we could look to move that.
Okay, just, just to confirm, um, because I thought you said on the last answer that, um, that public consultation probably wouldn't change the route in regards to environmental or animal impacts. Um, perhaps I've misunderstood your answer.
So it, it do, it depends what information we find in there. If, if, if that gave us access to more of the area, then, then potentially it would. Um, it would just depend on what that consultation comes up with, if there's something that's new information for us. Um, where we've, we've surveyed seventy percent, if we were able to access more, then obviously we would take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
How much time?
You've got an additional seven and a half minutes.
On top of, what was the initial?
Seventeen, so.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, uh, thanks for coming, uh, and reappearing before, um, this committee. Um, just going back to the questions, uh, asked by, uh, my colleague from the crossbench here, um, the, where you're saying that if we get access to the, you've surveyed seventy percent, if you get access to the thirty percent, what do you mean if you get access?
So if that happened during the, eh, the public exhibition process, we'll take it on board there. Um, otherwise it'll be further into the, um, compulsory acquisition process if we had to go down that route. So we're continuing to try to get consent to enter throughout the whole route. Um, and as soon as we can get consent to enter, we can undertake the survey and walk the route to do that final assessment. Um, but in the interim, we've had to assume that there is presence, um, of, of, of what, what's expected of species in those areas.
So you've got seventy percent, you've surveyed seventy percent, walked that line of the entire, uh, sorry, what's the length of it again?
Three sixty kilometres.
Three sixty kilometres, so you're saying that a third of that three sixty kilometres, so a hundred and twenty kilometres, is that right, that you haven't been able to survey, is that correct?
Uh, I'll come, I'll come back on the exact.
Because landholders won't let you on to their property because they're in opposition, is that what you're referring to?
I'll come back to the exact, um, kilometres amounts, but yes, we've done seventy percent of the route where the other thirty percent have not allowed access.
Yeah, so how much is that seventy percent, uh, through public land?
I'll have to confirm.
So is it a significant number then of the thirty percent? Is that a significant number of the total, uh, quantity of private land that you need to build the transmission line on, that you've been refused access?
I'll, I'll come back on the exact what was private versus, um, public of that seventy percent versus thirty percent, um, of where we've, where we've assessed it.
So when do you expect, um, HUM Link to be built by?
Mid twenty twenty-six.
You're confident of that?
That's our current timeframe that we are aiming for, yes.
That's what you, you keep stressing in all of the submissions and evidence to this inquiry, uh, how, uh, urgent it is. When's the EIS coming out?
Um, for public exhibition or, um, it is currently planned by the thirtieth of August to go on public exhibition in September.
And so public exhibition, how long will that, what's the usual?
As a state significant infrastructure project, I believe it's planned for four weeks.
So what do you plan to do with the fact that we've had before this inquiry, uh, quite a few private landholders who have, uh, said that there is no way that, um, you can come on to their property, uh, that they would welcome you with open arms essentially if it was underground transmission. Um, what is TransGrid's approach to the landholders who have said to us quite clearly that they're not going to grant you access to their property?
So we continue to try to negotiate, um, with landowners and that has been progressing, um, one-on-one to, to increase, um, the consent to enter and the options agreements, um, being converted. So that is an ongoing process, we generally continue all the way through this process to, to negotiate, to get access to all else, to do the survey requirements, um, and limit that even to just the survey if they were concerned about other activities such as geotech that may, um, have been an option in some scenario. So we're trying to tailor it to get consent purely for that survey requirements to increase, um, the um, consent to enter and survey period. So that, that is genuine that we are trying to continue that process currently.
Yeah, I have no doubt maybe that it is genuine that you are trying to continue that process, but we have been told unequivocally, unequivocally that landholders won't want you, uh, on to their property, so what happens then? You just said you've, you're doing the ask nicely with the surveys, what's the next step? Because we, again, this, uh, committee has been told in no uncertain terms that you're not welcome in terms of, uh, overhead transmission, underground transmission, you can start tomorrow.
So to start tomorrow, we would have to reassess route, work through with different landowners potentially and undertake that process. So we're not sure that the same landowners will be the impacted ones and whether they would welcome us to undertake, um, survey straight away either. So there's, there's the requirement to start from that process to re-refine the route, um, depending on where the topography suits for an underground cable to go through. Um, but through, through our processes, um, similar to what we've done in Project Energy, Energy Connect, we would have to go through the compulsory acquisition process as that final requirement to ensure that we can continue to build by our required timeframes.
How long does all of that take, um, just in terms of really teasing out this twenty twenty-six start date? Um, I mean, how long in terms of compulsory acquisition and then commencing the, the project? How long do you think it will take to try and get, uh, landholders', uh, approval? Uh, acceptance ideally, and if not compulsory acquisition, surveying that thirty percent? Have you factored all of that into this twenty twenty-six timeframe?
Yes.
So when is all that happening, how long is that going to take to get them? Got public exhibition process kind of completed, say, October, November? Um, then, uh, you'll be continuing to lia- liaise, I assume, after that?
Yes.
With, uh, the landholders, what's the, how many months are you giving that process before you're essentially, if you don't get agreement, if you don't get permission, kind of compulsorily acquiring and kind of forcing your way on to their property to do the surveys?
Yep, so we generally will continue to try to liaise and, and, and work through an amicable solution. Um, I empathise with the, the, people do not, um, agree with the process. Um, that is the process that we have to require to follow to, to meet our required timeframes, um, for the consumer to, um, have a reliable and cost-effective power network. Um, so we've factored that in, into, into next year, um, to have land available, um, for the survey process, um, and then through into construction next year.
Factored in, what is that factored in by what month? Like, after the public exhibition at the end of this year? Um, you'll continue working with landholders, but what have you factored in, in terms of when you just, you just pull, pull, um, trying to get, uh, you know, agreement and you start just going on to compulsory acquire? What, what timeframe have you given that, three months, six months?
Um, so we, we would, um, ideally, we're, we're aiming to have, um, all land available for access for construction, um, by mid to late next year, late next year. Um, I'll come back with some actual dates of, um, of the land acquisition process.
Available for construction or surveying, just to be clear?
So it would, um, survey has to happen before construction?
Yes.
Um, so I'll, I'll come back with the exact dates on that.
Okay, all right, um, moving on to, uh, Snowy two point O, was there a reason why in TransGrid's original, um, uh, the submission that you made to this inquiry, that, uh, the delay to Snowy two point O was labelled as potential delay?
To Snowy two point O, Snowy Hydro's project?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure why the, the potential was there rather than actual delay, but.
Because it is an actual delay, isn't it?
My understanding is, but I'll take that on notice to come back. So my understanding is it is a real delay.
I mean, with respect, I think it is something that you would be, surely, Mr. Dyer, like this is your, your business uh, much more than it is mine, and I found that out pretty easily.
Yep.
Uh, twenty twenty-nine at least, isn't it? Um, Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, we do realise it's delayed, we do not have a final date. We have interest in HUM Link for a broad variety of uses. Snowy two point O is one connection in to a much larger scheme. When we run our power flow studies and when we look at, we're releasing our transmission annual planning report this month. When we look at that, we did take into account Snowy's delay. But when you look at the whole system, back to, it's one piece of the puzzle and it's clear in the report and also in the ISP, it is much broader than Snowy two point O. The need for HUM Link, the need for PEC, V and I, and even the continuation up into the northern area of Hunter Transmission Line and connecting CWO Res, getting Wartas Super Battery up and online by twenty twenty-five. All of those are very key and critical and they all work together when we look at our system and we run our power flows, we are looking beyond the borders of New South Wales. We're getting information from other transmission companies, distribution companies, large load customers. All of that is factored in and we look at it as a whole and how we have. All of that is factored in and we look at it as a whole and how we have to participate. In the broader eastern seaboard of, of Australia to make sure that we have the power flows we need. Queensland, Victoria, South Australia, and even into Tasmania.
Could you provide to the committee, uh, please, the specific, uh, renewable energy zones and projects? That you expect, uh, Hume Link to be able to, uh, assist with in terms of transmission? You've just named a few. Could you provide that information to the committee?
So how Hume Link is part of the overall system? Yes, our transmission annual planning report is due out in August. And, um, and A M O's I S P also outlines it. So is that what you're referring to? Yeah, we'd be happy to make sure that once this tapper is released, that is received by this committee.
Thank you. So why, why did the, what was the original, um, uh, how long ago was it? Two thousand and eighteen, the cost of Hume Link has increased almost fivefold since then. What was the original cost estimate of, of Hume Link in two thousand and eighteen?
I'm sorry, I don't know that figure. I was, um, we'll take that on notice, what the original cost was. And, um, when we talk about the original costs, I believe that's the one that the I S P uses. The construction cost reports and then we go through and do a detailed study. So at that point, it's very much on, um, without looking at specifics of the area. I know that to be fact and once we started to, um, get through that process. I believe the number that I saw after we had looked at it, but I'm going to look at Jeremy to kick me out of the table if I'm incorrect, was three point three billion?
Three point three was the, the last assessed cost that was published prior.
This committee, yeah.
Yeah, and then when we look at the cost adjusted and then to today's cost, it's a twenty six, twenty seven percent increase.
So in relation to the capacity of Hume Link, I understand that it's decreased, um, from what it was when it was originally proposed. That the, the capacity is now two thousand, two hundred megawatts, which has decreased, I think. Um, is that correct?
Um, I'll, I'll have to confirm whether it was decreased, depending on which way the power is flowing. Whether it's, um, flowing towards Snowy to pump up or whether it's discharging. I'll, I'll take that on notice of, of the parameters changing.
So with, if Snowy two point O does get built, just under, trying to understand capacity here. What will be the capacity requirements of Snowy two point O? Are you aware of that?
Uh, I'll.
Am I asking you detailed lists?
I'm sorry, the detailed information like that on specific megawatt hours, I do not have with me.
Okay, um, I just wanted to ask questions now about the, uh, new, um, the A, the A M O. Uh, that's just come out, the, the Transmission Expansion Options Report, which I assume you've.
We participated in that, correct?
Yeah, reasonably familiar with that. So how does that impact, uh, Hume Link, the existing project? Does it change it in any way?
I'm not understanding the question. What do you mean by?
Is there anything based on the fact that A M O has just issued this in terms of there's, there's, um, there's maps? That like indicate expansion options, conceptual renewable energy zone expansion options. Uh, does it change? Does this change, uh, anything in terms of the way in which you would build Hume Link? Now that this is up or were you expecting it?
We provided information to that cost report. Um, and when the I S P comes out in December timeframe, the draft. Um, there may be additional pieces to it that are accumulated from the N I S, from Energy Co. As well as information from ours. That's why our ta, um, Transmission Animal Planning Report is provided. But we do not anticipate any changes to Hume Link.
Do you think there'll be additional, excuse me, additional transmission lines required? To run potentially, uh, to, to increase the capacity of, of Hume Link within the next decade or so? For example, five years, ten years, will that be required? Based on what A M O has, um, released? Will there be additional transmission lines required close by?
I can't answer that based on that report, but we will know more when the twenty twenty two draft I S P comes out. Then we will have more specific information.
Do you think that's, is it a possibility though, that, that more transmission lines?
I couldn't comment on it. It would be truly just my opinion and, um, my planning team is much closer to it. But I would be uncomfortable making any kind of assertion there.
So has TransGrid already signed up any contractors to build Hume Link?
Um, we are very close to commencing, um, early design works, um, with our contracting parties, but we have not signed them up yet.
So you have con, you have contracting parties that are ready to do design work, but you haven't signed anything with them?
Not with those parties yet, with going through the early involvement process, part of the procurement process, which we are required to do during this phase. Of our contingent project part one funding from the regulator, um, i- is to, to shore up the price. Hence why the, the price is now being, um, reported. Um, and also to commence early works on time to meet the required timeframe of mid twenty twenty six.
So what are the, what are, so the early works are, are what? Sorry, that?
Um, design, uh, so, so the detailed design process, um, the, the tower design and prototype testing of the transmission towers. Um, commencing, um, recruitment to ensure that the, the resourcing is adequate to deliver the project. Um, and early procurement for the project.
So all of that, you essentially contract out companies to start the process? Before things like the environmental impact assessments being undertaken and public consultations taken place?
From early design process, yes, we're, we're doing that in parallel to meet the timeframes.
But that essentially just locks you in, doesn't it, in terms of it, it being approved? I mean, the environmental impact assessment consultation is essentially just a ticker box then, isn't it? Like what, you, you put out the, the impact that this will have on the environment, you call for public consultation. What does the public feed in on and what can they hope in any way to, to influence in that process?
So we, we under, we, with our contractors, work through what we, what we can do in this phase of a design tower type testing phase. Um, we take into consideration other approvals in the same areas, um, of transmission projects. Um, to, to factor into what, um, requirements may be in place and work closely with the D P E through this process. To follow their process, um, for the consultation, um, process.
Okay, how much, um, what commitments? I understand that, well, how much is the, the commitment, uh, has TransGrid made financially for those early works? When you're saying kind of sign, you know, you haven't quite signed the contracts, but you know, you would know what that is costing? How much is that?
Um, that is, o- over the early works phase, that will be roughly fifty million dollars per contractor and there's two contractors.
Fifty million dollars per contractor?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, and has anything else been, beyond that, been committed in terms of the project and expenditure?
Yeah, so, um, as I previously stated, we've ordered transformers and reactors, um, very close to ordering, um, conductor. Um, and we'll also start to, um, procure some of the, the early steel manufacturer for the towers as well.
And how much is all of that again, excuse me, and if you said you'd already, um, mentioned it?
Um, yeah, I'd have to come back with how much that's all costing in total.
Could you provide that to the committee, please? Um, I just wanted to get, uh, ask about the, the fire situation. And I appreciate you, Ms. Jordan, clarifying, um, some of that at the beginning in, in terms of your opening statement. We did hear, uh, I think Mr. Redman said this at the last inquiry. That in Australia, we can't find any instance of a bushfire started by any transmission line more than sixty six K V. So did you, and one of the main reasons is that trees, uh, fall onto transmission lines and that, that TransGrid employees keep that pretty clear. But you did listen to the inquiry, the hearing in Tumit and I think we had similar evidence, uh, before us in, um. Where were we? Second day?
Armidale.
Armidale, I was about to say Tamworth, Armidale, uh, we heard evidence from, uh, Deputy Fire Commissioner, I believe. They talk about the, the arcing from the lines, sometimes the lines in, in very, very, uh, intense fire conditions. And those fire storms, if you like, can, can touch each other. And they did say that they were bigger transmission lines that were causing that. Did you hear that evidence?
I did and when I went back to my asset management team, they checked our records back to nineteen sixty. And we do not have any information that supports that we started a bushfire since nineteen sixty. With our transmission lines.
What, what, what do you need in terms of requiring evidence? How do you collect that evidence? Because this was evidence from, uh, local, uh, members of the community as well as, um, the people, people who were volunteers. Of their bushfire brigade that were, uh, captains, bushfire brigade captain, I understand, one of them was. Who gave, uh, evidence saying that, yes, he's seen, seen it with his own eyes. Um, the arcing from the, the transmission lines and somebody else was saying that they touched and they started. They saw the fire start. How do you collect evidence of, of, um, fires that start? In terms of your responsibility?
I'll take that on notice so it can be detailed and appropriate from the asset management organisation. Um, I did hear quite often a reference to power lines and not specifically transmission lines. And I also heard a lot of discussion about P G N E undergrounding ten thousand miles of power lines. And those power lines, they have chosen to underground the highest risk lines and those are the distribution lines. They have under, the commitment on that underground does not underground any transmission in California. Typically in California, if you go back through, the fire starts there and I lived through a lot of those. They were distribution power lines. They had, um, different criteria and settings on those lines that do not match how a transmission line is run. So I'll take that on notice on how we do the investigation and, um, get back to. The commission with that information.
Okay, could, do you, um, admit though? And I, I was just trying to find the transcript, but I can't do it in, in the time, uh, here. But, uh, I, I think I can recall asking, uh, quite specifically and confirming with the witnesses. When I asked about the fire, that it was a transmission line and a high voltage, you know, I think one of them said three thirty K V. It was very clear that we were, uh, asking about whether it was a transmission line that they saw this fire being started off. On and they said yes, um, uh, and you were listening, I think, to both days, were you, Ms. Jordan?
Not in its entirety. The piece I heard were power lines. I didn't hear this specific. We will get back to you on that specific instance and information associated with what was brought up. If they in fact have the specifics on the voltage, I'll make sure we get back to the commission with that.
Okay, uh, another, uh, issue that came up, uh, again, from, from the experts that appeared in Tumit particularly. Was, uh, essentially challenging your evidence in relation to the, the area. Being sterilised if it was used for transmission lines, uh, underground, uh, transmission lines. The area, essentially the whole area being sterilised, that you needed to access the whole, uh, area to dig it up. Uh, their evidence was that in fact light agricultural activities could place, take place on it. You probably wouldn't plant deep rooted trees, but that in other areas where underground transmission lines have been, uh, built. Covered up and, uh, it's able to continue, uh, the, the activity that was taking place there. Do you accept that evidence?
When, when we had discussed how the underground transmission lines and some of the specific figures I gave. Was associated with the alternating current. I have provided pictures of five hundred K B transmission lines. There's also a diagram from, um, from National Grid that shows what type of things that can be above it. It's low shrubbery like grass. What you don't have the ability to do is to do any type of agricultural work. That would require any kind of plowing or disruption of the soil. There is a small layer of native, native soil, a little bit deeper in a high voltage H V D C line. Because there is a lower temperature on that. So the, um, information we gave today is in response to the inquiry. And the discussions around H V D C. All of the pictures shown are H V D C. And you can see that it's still a very expansive process as you dig a trench to put in five hundred K V. I also heard part of the testimony where they discussed boring under trees and not disrupting. I'm in disagreement of that. I have not seen that done for this type of voltage. And as I shared, I've got a lot of global experience with this type of work. And I've yet to see somebody do a bore underneath trees for a five hundred K B H V D C line.
Thank you, thank you. We'll, we'll now move to government questions. Thank you.
Thirty-five minutes, well, thereabouts.
Okay, um, thank you Chair. Um, if I could just get it, ask you to give us a bit of a helicopter. I suppose macro picture of this whole, um, because ultimately what we're trying to achieve is net zero by two thousand and fifty, correct? And the means to get there is to interconnect a whole bunch of renewable energy sources, be it solar, wind, battery, whatever. Um, we need this web. Part of that web is transmission, as you've outlined. Has anyone done an analysis of the combination, um, between transmission and distribution? To, that, that we're required to get us there, um, so that, in other words, has anyone done an overall schematic? Of the pathway that we need to get there, based on the likely energy, the renewable sources, um, to get to that point? Um, so that, that we're, we're talking, at the moment, the discussion's been confined to segmented parts of the first steps along there, if you like. I'm just trying to get an overall picture of whether or not there's been any forward planning done on the whole pathway. And, and to what degree has TransGrid been involved in those discussions?
We are very involved with our distribution partners as we're doing our planning. Um, we do have one hundred thirty-two K B lines that are distribution voltage. That are owned by the, what, four partners? We have Endeavor, Ausgrid, Essential Energy and, um, and in the A C T, Enbo Energy.
Yep.
They all have some one thirty-two K V. They do provide input into our plan. Any of the, um, generation on that, those resources are looked at by A M O. We don't look at the generation sources really. We look at the flows and how we're going to manage the network.
Now, based on an assumption that the generation sources will materialise between, yep.
Yeah.
So can I ask you, in terms of the, um, the non-transmission segments of that spider web, if you like? If I could put it in layman's terms, um, is that, is that, your evidence here today is that that's much more amenable to undergrounding, is it?
The lower voltages, not necessarily the, the hundred and thirty-two K V. Um, typically when you get down to undergrounding, it's distribution voltage.
Yes.
So you wouldn't have, when I'm talking about a distribution voltage, it's like for a neighbourhood or like commercial.
Yep.
And typically you don't have generation sources connecting into those unless it's a small, um, just, you know. Distributed resource network where they're doing something a bit, I would say, almost off the grid. Um, and the other generation source that is growing rapidly on the distribution side is rooftop solar.
Okay, so we've got rooftop solar potentially coming into the lower voltage distribution side. But then at that higher end, even if it's one thirty-two, that it, it could be much more easily undergrounded than, say, five fifty or three thirty. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. Yes, that is correct.
So we could end up in a in a situation where, in the course of time, we're two thousand and twenty-three now. What we've got twenty-seven years to get there, we could end up with quite a significant portion of that network undergrounded because we don't need transmission lines everywhere.
I would disagree with that because when you look at the interconnected, the interconnection of the grid and the voltage is very important for the ability to move large amounts of electricity.
Yeah.
So the distribution level voltage has always been, you consider it. You make sure that you can adequately meet the needs of the distribution companies and understand their loads and the impact on the system. But those voltages are not very effective for moving long distances. They have a lot of line loss and they end up with high congestion. And you would have a much higher volume of lines trying to do it at a distribution voltage.
Okay, so your your position, TransGrid's position is basically that a lot of this is going to have to be overhead because of cost and time. But to the extent that we have rooftop solar proliferating, that will take some of the load off because you can you can use underground low voltage networks to. Would that be a fair enough assessment?
I suppose, though, that your your rooftop solar will will locally provide some of your generation source.
Yeah.
When when the sun's shining and if you have a lot more batteries in those areas.
Yeah.
But that will look after a small consumer element to it, not any of your industry level.
Nah.
Which you need your high voltage network, the backbone, which is required more now than even previously as we have more of the generation types changing around the network. We need to be able to harness the large solar from, you know, out southwest and and the wind areas as well and the hydro and the offshore, meaning those you need you need the strong high voltage transmission network integrated in in the web across all of New South Wales and between the states.
And one more, if I can hop on, the variable generation. It's important also to have that wide web because when it's foggy in Victoria or overcast in Victoria, they are going to have less solar. So having this large interconnected web gives you that geographic difference across the area so you can have different available generation supporting the network.
So, all right, so given that the evidence is is that you're going to have to have a significant portion of this network as transmission, which then implies a big cost factor for putting it underground as well as a time delay. Has anyone done a cost benefit analysis of the big picture? In other words, here we are, there's two alternate pathways. I can go underground between now and two thousand and fifty, and that gets us there. It's going to cost us X. Or we go overhead, gets us there much quicker, it's going to cost us Y.
I don't know if a comprehensive study's been done. But there are some global studies that are very interesting about length of line and when HVDC actually makes sense. There's a cost benefit, and you can see it, it's somewhere between eight hundred and a thousand kilometers for a single line when it really makes sense.
Eight hundred to a thousand kilometers.
Kilometers. Because there's a there's a a factor of costs and on the underground or on HVDC in general and the high cost of some of the equipment associated with HVDC. So even an overhead HVDC versus an overhead AC line, it takes a long distance to make it cost effective because of the converter stations. So when you get to the points of distance, there is a, say, a break even point where it does make sense to go HVDC, but those are very long lines.
So we so as a general rule of thumb, would we be talking about a ratio of somewhere between two and three times the cost if we, assuming the timing wasn't an issue?
Two to three times the cost. If it was a single line, and typically it's that six hundred to eight hundred kilometers to really get the value with the converter stations. But two to three times of costs with a long line and two stations.
That would be a reasonable assumption, yeah. And in terms of the timing, let's assume we're in this ideal world where we've got bucket loads of money and and we can do it. What what would be that, we just wouldn't get there, would we? Wouldn't be enough time to do it?
There wouldn't, not.
And why is that?
The most significant piece is the age of the coal-fired generation that is in New South Wales and the capability for keeping it on much longer and the cost impact. We're already seeing, June of two thousand and twenty-two was three months after I arrived. And it was an interesting phenomenon to see just how the aging coal fleet contributes into unplanned outages, unplanned occurrences on the system. You know, and they aren't from losing the whole turbine. It could just be the conveyor belt bringing in coal. All of the things in the aging coal-fired plants are showing up. So as we look to make this transition, and part of my interest in coming here, this is at a pace that I haven't seen before in the industry. And I've done a lot of work on renewable transitions. We are at a pace that's set by where we are today and where we need to be tomorrow based on the cost of energy. So in the US, you had a lot of years of subsidy going into your renewable portfolio. So it helped bring that portfolio to bear before the market did.
Are you saying that the government in California was a lot more preemptive of the transition than we've been here?
I would not say with transmission. I would say that what they.
Sorry, the transition to renewables.
Transition to renewables, they helped fund it. There was a lot of opposition to that as well. But when you see the amount we invested in transmission and subsidization of the renewable portfolio, you are seeing the cost change in California, the cost of electricity. I ran the peak reliability, which moved all the energy across. And we would see the trading costs and things like that because we managed the fourteen Western states. And I would watch California, who had subsidized a lot of renewables, paying the states nearby to take it. So it really reduced down the cost of energy in the whole fourteen Western states.
And this sort of phenomena you've pointed out with these aging coal-fired power stations. So is that a double whammy in the sense that you've got to you've got to prop them up because they're falling apart, so there's costs there? But you're also having to elongate the burning of fossil fuels in the meantime so that you can spend three times as much undergrounding the transmission network to get to? Is that kind of like a?
Well, I wouldn't say they're completely falling apart because they actually do still perform and could function.
Clearly.
But you're absolutely right. And up in the northeast, there were times we extended coal-fired generation trying to race with transmission, and it was a significant impact. Up in upstate New York, there were periods of time where you would have hundreds of millions of dollars that were additional cost to consumers because we had an unplanned shutdown of a coal-fired generator. And we were paying to keep them running and different model in the US. But it really pointed to when it's time to make the change, the transmission has to be in place. And you have to be able to remove, move to a renewable portfolio. System security, making sure you have adequate system strength. There are so many parts and pieces to this.
So can I, if I could put it in perhaps a little bit of a pejorative context, although I think it's necessary to paint the picture. If you're a firm believer in climate change and you think we're in a climate emergency and you want to get this transition done, we've pretty much got to go with the overhead to get there.
I would agree with that statement.
Can I just ask you one more thing before I defer to my colleague? In terms of the Australian Energy Regulator and their funding envelope, let's assume we're in that ideal world where we did have the time and we did have the money. What would be the regulatory hurdles to getting that funding from the AER?
When we put forth solutions, we put forth quite a few in the regulatory investment test process. And by the time you get to the end of that, you look at the ones that is the least cost and provides the best market benefits for consumers. So their look through the process has the customer in mind and the consumer who's paying the bill, and they are looking for the best solution for consumers.
So they so they, if TransGrid were to put an argument that, look, this is really bad. We've got landholders understandably upset who want it to go underground. There's just too too much community pushback against this. We really want to spend the money. What would be, is there a world in which the regulator would say, well, okay, you can have it?
I don't think I can answer that with what I know today. I'm taking the frame of reference of where we are, and I believe the AER is up next in this process.
That's true, that is true, yes. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to ask some questions about Hume Link first. Are you familiar with a document called the Project Assessment Conclusions Report, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, I am.
And that's a document from July two thousand and twenty-one. It apparently says in that document that the net benefit of Hume Link is some thirty-nine million dollars. Would you agree with that?
I don't recall right off, but I know that there was a market benefit analysis that had an amount.
Yeah. I was just just curious, assuming the correctness of that figure, about how a project that's been described as so critical and so time urgent could have a net benefit of only thirty-nine million dollars.
When we look at the information that's going to be run by by AEMO today and based on, we aren't in the slow change process. We are at that step change process. You will see a change in the market benefits overall for some of these projects. So if you take a snapshot in time, and of course, that was before June of two thousand and twenty-two, and as these retirements keep getting moved up, as we saw with Araring, I think it was a seven-year change. All of those things will contribute into the market modeling. And market modeling that we have done on different parts of our system has increased dramatically. We haven't done Hume Link. That will be done by AEMO through the process. But we are seeing all of it ratchet up and very large numbers in some congested areas.
In terms of the increasing cost of the project that you spoke about earlier in your evidence, is there a process by which the net benefit of the project is reassessed in light of that cost increase?
Yes.
Could you just explain that process?
Yeah, we will be firing filing our next CPA in probably by towards the end of this year with the new numbers. And it will run the numbers back through AEMO. The number has to be confirmed that there's still a net market benefit for us to go forward.
Yeah. Are you able to preempt that in any sense in terms of whether you think there will still be a net benefit to the project?
We can't do it ahead of time. It has to be when AEMO takes the information and runs it. But when we do our own economic modeling, we have some of the same inputs. And so we're confident that it will pass. But we have not had AEMO run it with the full market analysis.
Right. And does that process involve the application of the regulatory investment test for transmission, which I think is called RITT? Or is that a separate thing?
No, the RIT test concludes with the Packer. And then what we do with the very large projects, and I believe this is fairly new and jumping at any point, Jeremy, we go through a process to confirm the dollar amounts. And at each one of these tests, what CPA is?
Contingent project application. So we undertook a contingent project application, one, which we sought funding to develop the project to get it to a certain cost certainty to to allow now the market operator to confirm that it is still on the optimal development pathway, which that process is still ahead of us, and we look to try to have a published result by December this year.
And so by the time you get to the point where we are with going in for CPA two, you'll have a strong reasonableness of your numbers because you've done some of the early works and you get a good sense of the project costs. And then they take that last step of running, once again, a feedback loop to ensure that it fits and it's still a market benefit for consumers. There are a lot of checks and balances along the way.
Yeah. So you don't have to reapply the RIT test in light of these cost increases?
No, we don't.
No. So would you agree that when the project commenced that its cost meant that it was right at the margin in terms of approval in the regulatory process?
I just had my colleague whisper in my ear, it was four hundred and ninety-one million of market benefits for Hume Link at the Packer.
Yep, I think the figure that I had might have excluded environmental community costs and the competition benefits. Does that sound right?
Yeah, in the RIT. I don't believe. Let me take that one on notice to make sure that I'm accurate. I don't want to speculate, but usually when you go through the RIT process, you've put all those costs into your number and then they run a market benefit analysis based on that investment dollar.
Right, okay.
I think in reference to whether it was only just marked or not, it is an assessment by the market operator whether it proceeds and whether a delay to it creates more benefit or whether it's an insurance scheme with reliability of the network to say it stacks up still to continue now. And we're seeing in the change in the retirement of coal coming off quicker that that insurance benefit is definitely paying out to to have it built sooner rather than later.
Okay. I think you've already answered this, but and excuse my me not being totally on top of these processes. But what's the next stage in ensuring that Hume Link complies with the national electricity rules, which I think are called NER?
So the the next requirement is to submit the feedback loop to AEMO. So that that we need confirmation, positive confirmation that it's still optimal timeframe now to deliver Hume Link and not delay or stop the project.
Yeah.
After that, we will submit our CPA two, so our contingent project application to the regulator to assess that the cost is still prudent and efficient to continue on. So that is the the final gate in in the in the process for approval.
Sure, thank you. There's been an array of evidence that I suspect that you probably reviewed, which is to the effect that the regulatory test that Hume Link has to satisfy does not take into account a variety of environmental and community costs. Would you agree with that as a broad proposition?
So the assessment is done in the environmental impacts as required by the Department of Planning, which is going through a calculation method for the biodiversity offsets. So the impacts of the project is assessed versus the biodiversity offsets, and that's included in that price. Our latest cost estimate includes the environmental impacts as required to do a project in New South Wales of this size through the DPE.
Could you be referring to the market or the multi-criteria analysis that's used in Victoria where there are other inputs into the process that are considered? Because those do not apply, if that's what you're referencing. They don't apply in New South Wales today.
Yeah, so I was referring to, for example, and this is at a level of generality, but Ms. Andrea Strong, who gave evidence on the eighteenth of July, said the main problem is that the regulatory investment test for transmission doesn't include the environmental externalities, all the external costs. And the Australian Energy Infrastructure Commissioner has said that the rules of the market are not fit for purpose. So there's a real problem. The New South Wales Government requires environmental externality. The New South Wales Government requires environmental externalities, the environmental and community costs to be taken into account for projects more than 10 million. These transmission companies are building projects that are worth billions of dollars and aren't taking into account the environmental and community costs. So just take that statement, I'm sorry, that was quite long, as an expression of this broad proposition. Would you agree that the regulatory test is somehow, or somehow excludes these environmental and community costs?
I don't believe they exclude the costs. Those are all in for the costs that we have, but I think there's factors that people would like considered, associated with community benefits and things like that. So our costs are all part of the RIT. What, what I'm thinking might be, and I might be walking down a path and I'm not understanding what that specific comment was, was really to take into account non-monetary things that impacts the community and things like that. But we can look up that specific question and take it on notice to make sure that I've understood what was trying to be conveyed.
I don't think it was so much a criticism of the figures that TransGrid might be submitting to any particular part of the regulatory process. I think it was more a comment on the way that the regulatory process assesses those things. And I think at the core of the suggestion was the suggestion that the cost to the consumer is given too much weight. I think that's the upshot of it. And I was just curious if you could comment about, on this suggestion that the cost of electricity to the consumer has such weight in the regulatory process that other things in effect are not taken into account, such as environmental and community impacts?
It is that way in Victoria, but I do think consumer benefits really need to be, personally, this is Marie Jordan, not even TransGrid. Personally, I think the cost to consumers has a huge impact because you look at the demographics across New South Wales, where a small savings can be a big difference to some of the people impacted by the cost of electricity today, because it has grown so much. I think it's an important factor. But Victoria does use the multi-criteria analysis that allows other non-consumer cost benefits to be included.
Right. So does that mean that Victoria departs in some way from the national model law?
Yes, it does.
Okay, okay. In terms of the impacts of delay of the project that might occur as a consequence of undergrounding, I'm just curious to, to get your opinion, Ms. Jordan or Mr. Roberts, on if undergrounding was to occur in a way consistent with the needs of the national electricity market, when would planning and so forth for that have had to have started?
To meet the date, we're well past that time period, and I'll point to just 138K line that went from Dublin to Belfast. They were in a very similar situation we are today, of an urgency for the line to be undergrounded.
Sorry, 138 kilometres or?
Yeah, 138 kilometres. And of that 138 kilometres, it caused almost a six-year delay, and there was a significant cost to consumers in that delay of that project. So switching to undergrounding is a five to six-year delay on a project that's only 140 kilometres. It will be even more impactful here as we try to do a new analysis on 360 kilometres. And we do not have a lot of HBDC specialists for construction, as well as the equipment. So all of that is at a brand-new starting point. So that will be very difficult if it's ended up in that direction.
Just further to that, Ms. Jordan, with comments you said previously about Snowy's delay making Hume Link more critical, I wonder if you would comment about how it would put us, how it would put our country at risk, given, you know, other comments that you've made about Hume Link in the ISP being critical in terms of network security and reliability? What's the consequences of that?
The consequences of that would likely be insufficient, insufficient resources. So in June of 2022, we spent a lot of time in lack of reserve. They have it categorised from one to three. So I would see us in those lack of reserves, and if you couldn't get the generation, the next option is rotating blackouts that are managed through the distribution network operators. We do have plans, we came very close to executing them in June of 2022. We were fortunate that we had a few things occur that stopped that. But having lived through the energy crisis in California, it's real. When the resources aren't there, you go into rolling blackouts. And during some of the, even in the recent couple of years, with having to turn down transmission lines in California, there were a significant number of rotating blackouts that occurred in my area. I spent quite a few afternoons in the dark in Napa, California, because we turned down some of the transmission lines. That ability to move energy across the regions is critical.
So did the previous state government, I mean, the government in place before the recent election, take any steps to facilitate or encourage a move towards undergrounding of Hume Link?
Not that I'm aware of, Jeremy.
Not at all aware of that.
Could I ask just one, I note the clock's ticking down here. Just taking up a point that was raised by my colleague, in relation to a question on notice and question one, the question was, what will be the percentage increase to the consumer bill? You know, what would it be if Hume Link was undergrounded or some statistic around that increase? And, and your answer, and I just quote from the first sentence, "The CPA two for Hume Link will look at the indicative impact on consumer bills over the 2023 to 2028 period for our investment in Hume Link. This will be lodged with the Australian Energy Regulator in October." Now, I know that, that, that work obviously is underway, but in terms of our timetable, which is really the end of, of August, I was wondering, in terms of the economic modelling that's being done for that, and particularly some of the statistics that are feeding into that modelling, whether it would be possible for us to get access to some of that? Because that might, that might be of value for us in trying to meet our terms of reference in terms of the potential cost of, you know, to consumers of their bills if it was undergrounded.
We have an executive joint planning committee where all the TNSPs and AEMO get together, and I do know they are frantically rebuilding ISP 2022, or excuse me, 2024 draft. I do not believe that information would be available. They have to run it at their level, they have to get all the planning inputs in. I don't think it would be available by the end of August. But I think that would be a good question for AEMO if there was an ability to do that. I just know from conversations, it's a very detailed process, building all that economic modelling in.
Do us a favour, maybe, and just take it on notice, because the, the up-to-date statistics, and particularly the econometric modelling, might be of value, if there's anything available that we could feed into the process.
Yeah, I will see what we have. We utilized endgame economics on some of the timing of projects, so there may be something available, but I don't think-
And Nexa Economics too, I see.
Pardon?
Nexa Economics too, I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? No? Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you for attending this hearing again today. Thank you so much for the time you've given up to be here.
Thank you for inviting us.
And in terms of the additional questions, the committee members may have additional questions after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any that you have taken on notice today, be returned within three days, and that's just because of the tight turnaround of our inquiry. The secretariat will also contact you in relation to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us again, Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
Good to see you. I remind you that, as you've appeared previously before this inquiry, you are appearing today under your prior oath or affirmation. And could you just please state for us again your name and position title?
My name, I'm James Cox, and I am Deputy Chair of the Australian Energy Regulator.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making a short statement?
I don't think so. I think we made a fairly comprehensive opening statement last time, and I don't think there's a need to supplement that in any way, so happy to go straight to questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cox. So we'll move to the Honourable Wes Fang first for questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for appearing again, Mr. Cox. I had some further questions with the, I guess, the guidance and climate of the regulation mission to, what is put to companies when they're looking at building these sorts of projects? I guess the hearings have really teased out the fact that we are putting the benefits of cost to the consumer really above all else. It is, that's the priority, and the cheapest option is often what is prioritised. But what we've heard from communities is that there is a cost with the cheapest option. There isn't always a monetary cost. What is the option for the regulator to broaden its scope to include non-monetary costs, such as the cost of mental health amenity, visual impact, into that cost that it uses to value a project? Is it, is it feasible that you can do that? Do you need a regulation change? Do you need a legislation change? Is it something that you think is a viable option to have a more holistic view of what is the lowest cost?
Okay, thank you for that. If we go back to the sorts of things I was saying last time, we're involved with this in two ways. One, through our role in, if you like, supervising the application of Regulatory Investment Test, another one in our role in approving revenues through the contingent project process that TransGrid are talking about just a moment ago. If we look at the first one of those Regulatory Investment Tests, the objective there is to find the option that provides the greatest net benefit. And in that context, I think it's not only cost, it's also issues that the community may be concerned about, such as visual impact. And I think I write in saying that the Commonwealth Minister for Energy and Climate Change, Mr. Bowen, is proposing a rule change that will require transmission providers to consult on that. So I think there's a route there. If we then look at our role in approving expenditure under contingent project process, there we are required to consider issues raised by the communities, so we're required to consider that, and whether they have been adequately addressed by the transmission provider. So I think there is a scope for that to exist. Beyond that, obviously, you know, it's not the only thing, obviously, I think issues of cost do matter, costs to the general community. So there's, there's an element of balancing all those things, but I don't think it's right to say that we're required to take the lowest cost option, or that other factors aren't capable of being taken into consideration. I mean, I suppose one other thing is when we're looking at the RIT test, what, what is relevant there are benefits to those that produce or consume electricity. In future, that will include emissions reduction, once the, the law change comes into place. But that means that there are other things that may be beyond those, the consumer and produce electricity, transport electricity. Doesn't mean those things are totally ignored, because it's open to governments to make a contribution to the cost of transmission projects. If they do, that, that reduces the cost that's required to be considered under the RIT test. So there's another route there. So I mean, I think it's a bit broader than just the lower cost, but I wouldn't want to say that, you know, cost to general community is not something that's important or relevant, but it's not the only thing.
That's really helpful testimony, I think, because there's certainly a view within the community, certainly those communities where we have visited and taken testimony from, that there is this requirement to have the cheapest option. And I guess what you indicated is that there is an opportunity for other factors to be considered when these projects are at the planning stage before construction. So in that instance, given that there already is, by your answers, some flexibility in not only considering other factors and the fact that we might be looking to amend the rules again if Mr. Bowen does what he is indicating, and go down the path of having those other external factors having weight in, in the calculations, what, what would have provided TransGrid and Hume Link the opportunity to underground in the current framework? As in, what would have provided the, your organisation to say, yes, that, that is an appropriate and suitable solution moving forward, given that it, by all accounts, can be weighed into it?
Yes, important to bear in mind that what we, what we operate is called a proposed response model, whereby the business proposes and we respond. We have not had before us a, you know, if you like, a long link undergrounding project to consider, no one's actually ever proposed that, so we haven't had to turn our minds to it. I guess what I would say is, well, no, costs are not irrelevant here, costs to the general community. So if it's the case that the long underground link was a very expensive link, that would obviously tend to count against it in the weighing of costs and benefits. So it does come down to, I suppose, issues of cost, the benefits to the community that, you know, gets the benefits of undergrounding versus the cost to the community in general, bearing in mind that the cost of electricity is an issue of great concern to people at the moment.
And I appreciate that, and ironically, I've got my electricity bill today, and I've never seen one as far.
I got mine, I got mine over the weekend, yes.
Yes, yes, so I, you know, I get, managed to pick yourself up off the floor and come in today, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think, though, that, and this is where there's, the view that we, where we get into trouble, I guess, because part of the reason that I wanted to have you come back so that I could, I guess, clarify some things is because, in effect, everybody who appears says, we have to have, where we're told that we have to have these overhead lines because it's the cheapest option, and the regulator requires the cheapest option because that impacts power prices.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So that's the view of the majority of people appearing. So in my mind, I'm thinking, well, you know, there are other factors, how do we get them weighed in? I put the question, how do we get them weighed in? And he said, well, actually, they can be. There is, there's mechanisms there and there's potential future changes. And so then I said, okay, what are the circumstances where we would have had an underground proposal approved? And he said, we go back to the cost, which is, I guess, is it fair to say the predominant factor with which the projects are assessed?
I think it's fair to say, Mr Fang, this is an evolving area of operation. I mean, it's true that we haven't had many large transmission links built in recent times, so we're all learning. I think one of the things that we're giving very active consideration to is the general issue of social licence. In other words, what is required for communities to accept, the host communities, if you like, to accept that transmission lines may come into those areas. I mean, that is an area of active consideration at the moment, but clearly, I mean, if it's the case that various activities need to be undertaken to give the social licence for the transmission company to operate in an area, I mean, that's something that we would need to consider, both at the RIT stage and also in the project stage. But those are things that we're actively working on at the moment, and we hope to give further guidance to later in the year. So, I mean, I think if you ask why people think it's just cost, well, probably because they haven't really gone through the process in any great detail up to now, but as we indicated earlier, there is some scope for other things to be considered. But once again, I wouldn't want to give the impression that we don't care about costs to the general community, which is a very important consideration. And if the costs are very high, that obviously would tend to work against the project, but it's not to say that they're not things that could be done at reasonable costs that would make the project more acceptable to the community, and that's something which I think these processes need to consider.
So given that you've said that, in effect, what you operate is a response model where you don't provide the solution, a company comes to you with a project and then you apply your rigor to what's proposed, if TransGrid had provided you the plans for an underground link, would you have assessed it on the merits of the project? Or would you have assessed it against something like an overhead system and said, no, we're not going to approve the underground because the overhead's cheaper?
What would have happened in that case is the project would have to have gone through the RIT process, which we described last time. The objective of that proposal is to consider credible options and to identify the one that produces the greatest net economic benefit to those that produce and consume electricity. So that wouldn't necessarily have been the cheapest project, but the undergrounding project would have to show that produced greater benefits than an alternative, which might have been an overhead project. So they would have gone through that process. It's worth mentioning that were there to be a change in the cost of the project, well, then it may be necessary for the proponent to go through the RIT process again to demonstrate that the revised project then is the one that provides the greatest net economic benefit. So we would expect that process to be gone through to demonstrate that the particular project is the one that has the greatest net economic benefit in terms of the RIT.
So if the project was, for example, to say, have gone from a $3.3 billion project to a $4.8 billion project, would that require a reassessment, do you think? Or are you happy to accept that that is a reflection of the changing circumstance in construction and inflation?
So you're saying the cost has increased from, say, $1 billion to $3 billion? Is that the same?
Well, no, just the apparent Humelink had gone from being a $3.3 billion project to now being a $4.89 billion project in real terms. And that was the testimony from TransGrid. I mentioned that the assessment was done on the $3.3 billion. Now, there's been a, you know, 30, 35, 40% change in the pricing structure of that project. Would that trigger a reassessment?
Well, what they then have to consider is whether it's going to change which is the most preferred option. If in their opinion it would do that, yes, they have to redo the RIT process.
And in the circumstance where you've said that social licence is obviously becoming a more, and I really hate the term social licence, because it's sort of, it's a term that's really got no tangible benefit, or sorry, tangible measurement, really is probably the better way to phrase it, but it's just this, it's this word that's used to describe something where, you know, we feel like it makes, you know, people have ownership of it, where the social licence, say, for example, of the undergrounding was the reason that TransGrid might have put to the regulator the proposal to underground, and then in the assessment criteria of other suitable options, overhead had come through as the cheaper option and the more effective and cost-effective model for the end user. But because of that social licence issue, TransGrid had gone with the undergrounding group. How do you make, how do you balance that now? And is it the case perhaps that after the Energy Minister federally implements some of the changes in proposing, that it might be the case that an undergrounding solution that's put forward might be approved by your organisation?
Yeah, I mean, I think if the proposed rule change goes ahead, transmission companies were required to consult more fully with the local communities on this sort of issues that we've been talking about. What we would then want to see is that the business had considered the input it receives in the community and had taken that into account in making its decisions, which doesn't mean they would necessarily do what the community prefers, but it means that they have turned their minds to the issues and seriously addressed them. So we would expect that process.
I'm just going to match one at a time. I just wanted to ask, is it the case that if that rule change occurs, the programmes will be grandfathered? As in, if that comes in, will Humelink then have to re-undergo its approval process? Or the fact that it has already been approved will effectively grandfather it from having to go through the new?
I imagine that the new process would apply to new projects rather than retrospectively to Humelink. I'm not 100% sure of that.
So there's perhaps a real push on now to get Humelink approved and underway in order to have grandfathered because of the huge community backlash against the towers and the overhead lines?
Look, I'm sure that, you know, TransGrid has progressed the project, will want to take account of community views to the extent that it can, but it has to weigh this, of course, against the need for the project, which they talked about just before we came in, and also, of course, issues of cost to the general community. So there is a balance there.
By my calculation, though, believe, I've probably run out of time.
Chair, is it? You've got a minute and a half left.
Oh, well, then I'll use, I'll absolutely use that. So, Mr Cox, I guess the last question, as a bit of a bonus one from me. When do you think that there's likely to be this rule change, is it going to be in draft form and then with consultation, or is it just going to occur? When do you think it will be implemented and when do you think it will come into effect?
Well, the rule change process is run by the Australian Energy Market Commission, so probably the timing is best addressed to them, but their normal practice is to have a consultation process, so there will be the opportunity for the community to have consultation.
And how long does that normally take?
I think it's best if that question's addressed the AEMC.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I imagine I've probably used my minute and a half now. If not, thank you very much, Mr Cox, for giving me that again today and clarifying some of the issues.
Thanks, Wes. I'll now hand over to the crossbenchers for questions.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Chair. One thing that's a concern that's been raised with us, and I'd like to sort of just get your thoughts on it or your response to it, is the lack of sort of focus, I suppose, and emphasis on the significant environmental and community costs associated with a project like this. As the regulator, do you have any sort of response to that? And the fact that, you know, that a lot of the concerns from the community is that these other areas don't seem to be as emphasised as much in overall considerations?
The regulatory investment test that we're talking about considers the benefits to those that produce transport, use electricity, so it's an electricity market specific test. As we mentioned, I think earlier on, the government is passing, Commonwealth Government's passing legislation to require us to take emissions reductions into account. So in future, emissions reductions will be treated as, if you like, internal to the market. Other environmental externalities, well, the businesses are required to meet their environmental obligations. When we were looking at Project Energy Connect, which is the one we've actually done, so it's a one real life experience, we spent a lot of time thinking about biodiversity offsets, and I think it's fair to say that TransGrid and probably Electrinet in South Australia purchased even a amount of land for biodiversity purposes, and we treated that as a reasonable cost of constructing the power line. So I think, one way or another, a lot of environmental costs do get taken into account in the process. I mean, to the extent that it's, people feel that's not satisfactory, I mean, it's always open to governments to contribute something towards the cost of these broader social benefits, and if they do that, well, that reduces the cost of the project itself, so thus making it perhaps easier for the project to pass development tests. So I think there are ways in which environmental factors do get taken into account. Also, of course, and very relevantly, we're, as we're saying, moving into increasing concern about social licence issues, and some of those may well be environmental issues, so that's another route in which they could get into the process.
Do you think that there's sort of scope for more regulatory framework changes to be made to ensure that more environmental impacts and animals and biodiversity could be taken into account when assessing that cost benefit ratio?
Well, I would say that many of them are already taken into account. I guess the, we apply the test that's prescribed for us by the various governments. There's been much debate over the years as to whether or not it should be broadened, but I think that probably is an issue for the governments to consider rather than for us as a regulator.
The AEMO's 2023 Transmission Expansion Options Report that came out in July 2023 said costs of the Humelink have increased from $3.3 billion to $4.8 billion. I'm just wondering what your response to this as the regulator and if there are concerns that this project is no longer good value for money for consumers in its current form, given that there's been such a significant change?
Yes, I think the increase of costs is of concern to us. I mean, we're, I think we are concerned that the initial cost estimates prove to be so far wide of the mark. I mean, I don't think that's a good situation. Obviously, as we learn more about how to construct these long transmission links, we'd expect cost estimation to improve, and we've suggested a number of measures to improve the accuracy of cost estimation, so it is something that's received attention for us. So we are concerned and we are taking action to improve the accuracy of cost measurement. Does this mean that Humelink is still the right option? Well, that requires a consideration of costs and benefits, and I think TransGrid and perhaps AEMO would argue that the benefits are also increasing, given the rapid transition that we're moving away from coal towards renewables, and given concerns about snowy two pot zero, ironically enough. They would say the benefits are increasing. Obviously, there will come a point where the costs are so great that perhaps some other option would be preferred. If the increase in cost is enough to cast doubt on the acceptability or the, whether the preferred option is still the preferred option, then the proponent has an obligation under the RIT test to reapply the test.
So, and when would that come into place?
Well, I mean, I don't really think it's a precise number. The point is that the proponent has to be persuaded that the existing preferred option is still the preferred option, given the costs have increased, bearing in mind that benefits may also be increasing because we are moving more rapidly towards reliance on renewables than we might have expected a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just build on that line of questioning, if I may. So you said that the proponent, so in this case, TransGrid, it's up to them, is it to determine whether they need, because of this quite extraordinary increase in the cost, which you acknowledge, it's up to TransGrid to determine if there needs to be a new cost benefit analysis? Does the regulator play any role in that?
No, I mean, I think it is up to TransGrid to determine that. So it's their responsibility, yes.
So just to be clear, in terms of, I'm not sure what the regulatory framework is for this, but there is nothing that the regulator can look at and say, hey, this has increased a lot? I think your cost benefit analysis that you provided may not be, you know, correct. Maybe you need to, whether it still meets, I think it's called the regulatory investment test, there's nothing within this regulatory framework that empowers the regulator to do anything?
We have no power, I think it's the proponent's responsibility. Now, obviously, we do talk to them, so they'll be aware of our views.
So what is it, though, that, so I understand there's been a capacity decrease of, I think it was 2,750 megawatts down to now 2,200 megawatts, although the TransGrid senior officials that couldn't answer that before, plus the cost has increased so much. So does that constitute a material change in circumstances? I understand could trigger the regulatory investment test to be reviewed. How is that undertaken?
That might well be correct. I mean, as we're saying, as we acknowledge that costs have increased, I think the question in the mind of the proponent would be whether there are increased benefits that offset those increased costs.
Who determines that in the eyes of the proponent? Who determines that? Are they required to put in another cost benefit analysis that anybody else sees? Or is it literally just up to TransGrid?
It would be their judgement, I think. They obviously follow the work that AEMO is doing on transition towards net zero, and as we're saying, transition is happening more rapidly than we might have expected some years ago, so that tends to increase the benefits of the project. So they have to make the comparison of benefits and costs. If it's their judgement... If it's their judgment, the increase in costs is not outweighed by the increase in benefits, then they must reapply the RIT.
Do you have any role, does the regulator have any role then in consulting with TransGrid? In indicating any concern, in suggesting potentially that they should undertake a new cost benefit analysis in expressing any view on this?
We would not be able to have a formal view because it is TransGrid's responsibility. Obviously, we do discuss issues with them.
So part of your revidence the other day said that the regulator is responsible for establishing and amending the cost benefit analysis guidelines on the application of AEMO's Integrated System Plan and Regulatory Investment Tertiary Transmission Guidelines. Cost benefit guidelines are used to determine the optimal development of the NEM through the lower system costs associated with generation, storage and transmission investment. And the RITT is a cost benefit analysis that network businesses must perform and consult on before making major investments in their networks.
Yeah, correct.
So if the RITT is a cost benefit analysis that network businesses must perform and consult on before making major investments in their networks, at what point triggers any kind of, I'll ask it again, based on this, despite the, what is a massive increase now in costs, a decrease in how much energy those transmission lines are providing, I would think that would be a substantial change to the whole project and would require a new cost benefit analysis. And it says that network businesses must perform before making major investments in their networks. So there's something there, isn't it? Isn't there that they have to prove this cost benefit analysis to someone before they're able to go ahead? And at what point can government, can the regulator, trigger a change? Or is it just completely up to TransGrid? Is that what you're telling this committee? There is no other way to get them to undertake another cost benefit analysis?
They are required to undertake the initial cost benefit analysis. And they're required to do it under the guidelines that we set out. Then after that, there is a disputes procedure. So there's opportunity for people to raise disputes about the RIT analysis that's been undertaken. And we have a dispute at the moment with VNI West, not TransGrid. So we're actively considering dispute. What you're talking about is what should happen if there is a change in circumstances after the RIT.
That's correct.
Has been completed. There, the arrangements are different. Obviously, it is a substantial exercise to undertake the RIT process. It takes time and effort to do it. So it's not something you want to do without good reason.
What is a good reason?
A good reason would be change in circumstance such that the option previously preferred is no longer the preferred option. Some other option might be a preferred option. It might be a non-network solution, for example, rather than network augmentation. But it does require a consideration, not just of costs, but costs in relation to benefits. And that is the responsibility of the project proponent.
I know my times are ticking away, so I'll move to another issue. I asked TransGrid earlier a question about the expenditure that has taken place already. I understand that the AER has already approved $383 million for Humelink Stage One. And TransGrid has requested a further $250 million. Is that correct?
I think you're referring to Stage One and Stage Two. So there, sorry, there's Stage One, there's Part One and Part Two. Part One was about what we call early works activities, which is a lot of the sort of planning and community consultation activities that we've been talking about. So it's enabled them to undertake that. Part Two was about early purchase of equipment. I mean, I think as TransGrid is saying, there's a great pressure to get this project undertaken as quickly as possible.
There's a lot of pressure. I mean, is it reasonable then to spend, what, it's like $633 million, and adding both of those up before, as we heard earlier, that the environmental impact statement has not even been exhibited yet? Is that the standard process?
I mean, I think we were comforted in thinking about that because the equipment is capable of being resold if necessary. So the risk to the consumer was not particularly substantial because of the nature of the equipment that was being purchased. So we thought it was reasonable balance, given the, no, the national priority in proceeding with this project as quickly as possible that we should apply.
Can I check in terms of the risk to the consumer? Sorry, does that mean that if Humelink, if it doesn't go ahead, that what's been bought can be used elsewhere? Is that what you mean?
That's what I was saying.
Is that, okay. All right. Do you, so your Snowy 2.0, in terms of the potential start date or delivery date, if it's going ahead, what's your understanding of Snowy 2.0?
We probably are not the experts on Snowy 2.0. What I understand is there are still benefits to the Humelink project, even if Snowy 2.0 does not go ahead in terms of enabling the connection of more renewable energy into the New South Wales electricity transmission system. But I'm not the expert on the Snowy 2.0.
So that, what you've just said in terms of different renewable energy projects being able to, for Transmission Link to assist those, was that, is that in the official application by Humelink, the official approval? Or has that come about in recent months as a result of the Snowy 2.0 delay? Was that included as a basis for the approval originally?
I think the original approval would have been on the basis that Snowy 2.0 proceeds as planned. I think the source of what I'm telling to you is probably conversations with AEMO, who may be best placed to provide further information on that point.
Okay, I think I'm exhausted with my questions pretty much, yeah. Thanks. Mary from Government Members.
So you've already spoken about this extensively, but could you just, in simple terms perhaps, try and explain what is the ultimate test that the AER applies in approving or not approving transmission infrastructure?
Right. There are, if you like, two stages. The first stage is the regulatory investment test for the transmission, which we have been discussing. That's planning process. And that is about selecting the option that provides, in net terms, the greatest benefit to those that produce transport, consume electricity.
So just on that, you said before the greatest economic benefit, is that right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And what's the second part, sorry?
The second part is when, so that's the planning process. The second part is, while the thing is getting constructed, how does the business recover its costs? And there, what we do is we try and determine what we think are the prudent and efficient costs of undertaking the project. So then there's assessment of the reasonableness of the costs that are being undertaken, which might very well include various sorts of environmental offsets or social licence considerations.
Right. So things like, for example, the diminution of visual amenity for residents from the installation of a project like Humelink, is that only taken into account firstly to the extent that it might be relevant to the question of the greatest economic benefit to those who produce and use electricity? And/or to the next test of the overall reasonableness of the expenditure?
Right. Let's talk about visual amenity in particular. Couple of things there. Firstly, as you probably know, the New South Wales Government has compensation payments to landowners, which might well be taken into account of visual amenity. Beyond that, we're sort of thinking about neighbours or the broader community. I think it would fall under the heading of social licence costs. That what's required for this project to be acceptable to the community of the hostet. But those things are required for the project is going to be taken ahead. It's a project, I'm sorry, is going to go ahead and need to be considered by us in thinking about what are the prudent and efficient costs.
Yeah. I'm just not, not completely understanding how those sort of factors really would have a lot of weight or substance in the context of the test that you're talking about?
Difficult to say. I mean, because we, as you, we really haven't had many of these things to think about. So how's it work in practice is undiscovered territory in a way. But suffice to say, obviously, I think social licence issues are becoming increasingly to the fore and increasingly being thought about. We mentioned the Minister's rule change is going to require greater consultation on those aspects. I think Andrew Dyer was here last time and spoke about the inquiry that he is undertaking, which is better, how better to address social licence issues? And we ourselves, we're aware of the need to provide greater guidance to transmission companies as to how they should address social licence issues. So that's something that may come out later in the year. So I think it is an evolving territory. But certainly, there is scope to consider these things. But as I was saying, there has to be weighed against the other thing, which is the cost to the general community. And somehow, a balance between those things needs to be struck because of concern about high electricity prices, which we all share.
There seemed to be virtual consensus in the evidence, both from TransGrid and from experts who were in favour of undergrounding, that as the regulatory arrangements stand, that the AER would not have approved an undergrounded option for Humelink? And in those circumstances, is the only way that you could see, under the current framework, undergrounding being approved by the AER, would be if a level of government made an investment that offset the cost effectively?
Number of things to say there. First, I mean, we have never had in front of us a direct current link to assess. So it's all really outside our experience. It's alleged the cost is very high by some people. I mean, if the cost is high enough, so to speak, that would make it hard for us to consider the expenditure was prudent because it got to weigh the general consumers with those of the hostet community. So the other point, were governments to contribute some revenue towards the costs of undergrounding? Well, yes, that would obviously be a relevant factor that would apply to the test that we would apply. So yes, that would make it easier.
There's been extensive evidence in the inquiry, including from TransGrid today, that it's too late effectively to entertain an undergrounding proposal because it would cause delay of up to five years and have consequent effects on the electricity, the functioning of the electricity market and system, I suppose. Is that something that you're able to comment on from the AER perspective?
I mean, what I would say there, I think, is that we do have a national energy strategy that's highly dependent on the construction, rapid construction of transmission links. And, you know, we are doing what we can to accelerate the investment in those links. So yes, I think a long delay in the present context would be of concern to us. Now, given the other things we're working on.
And if one works on the assumption that a significant investment would have, need to have been made by a level of government in the past to facilitate undergrounding, are you able to say when realistically, in the past, that sort of investment would have needed to have been made in order to avoid above grounding Humelink?
I probably don't know the answer to that. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a decision for governments, yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Chair, that's more questions?
I might just pursue some of that line of questioning, just to maybe clarify a couple of things. So in terms of the process, the electricity, be they a transmission network or a distribution network, submits a, submits a regulatory approval to the AER, correct, for a funding envelope? For how many years is that? What period is that?
So typically, it would be for five years.
Five years.
There is an issue there that these things typically happen during a determination period. So we might make a contingent project decision for, say, three years and then roll it into the general capital program at the end of those three years at the next determination.
So this particular, this particular project we're talking about, I'm assuming that TransGrid put a submission in post the advent of the renewable energy zones policy by the previous government? Would that be, or what was the regulatory period where they made the submission for this particular project?
Well, what they're doing now is to asking us to amend the decision we've made already, I think, for the 2328 period. So that's determination already.
So that 2328 period, the application would have preceded the res. Therefore, they've made an amended determination asking for money for this?
They're asking for money for Humelink, for the early stages of Humelink. Separately, they're also asking for additional money for the project they're doing under the res. But most of those are behind Humelink. Sort of the central west, Arana, I think, is still behind. We're doing our first determination under the New South Wales res for the Waratah Super Battery that's in front of us at the moment.
Okay. So that, so that the applicant, be it TransGrid or Rosgrid or whoever the distributor is, it's very much up to them as to the means of the capital investment. In other words, in this case, they've applied for overheading, presumably on the basis of that cost benefit analysis that they did under your guidelines? Now, had they, let's assume for the moment that they had have put a submission into underground it, is it, is it the AER's view on probability that, given the locus, the parameters that govern the determination, the feed through to electricity prices and the length of time to construct, given the national energy strategy, would have been prohibitive had they made that application? Now, just an addendum to that question, sorry. Presumably, there's preparatory conversations which happen between the applicant and the AER as to the options and likelihood of success?
We encourage early discussions.
So would those?
With our staff and the proponent's staff, yeah.
So would those early discussions indicated along the lines that I just articulated?
Well, I mean, I think we've got to go back to Stage One, which is the RIT process. So we, before we can approve money on the contingent project process, we have to be satisfied that the RIT process has been satisfactorily, satisfactorily undertaken. So were they to come forward with the undergrounding option under there, we would have wanted them to have gone through the RIT process and shown us that the undergrounding option was the option that produced the greatest net economic benefit in the market. So they would have had to have gone through that process. If they hadn't gone through that process and came, well, we've just thought again and we now sort of think it should be undergrounded. Well, I think we'd be saying to them, we haven't passed the RIT process. haven't passed the RITT process and you should go back and do it again.
Yes, but my
So I mean, that, that's where it would get a bit awkward, yeah.
My question is more about the, the mindset that led to the submission to be overhead. Presumably, that, what fed into that decision to make that submission was preparatory conversations or preemption by the applicant, TransGrid in this case, that the AER is not likely to get this over the line, even if we go through the RITT process, because the feeding to higher electricity prices and the delay is going to be a bridge too far, too hurdles?
Look, I mean, it would have been the judgment of TransGrid. I mean, I don't think we would try to influence that judgment. But yes, they would obviously have looked at the cost. And, I mean, I think the cost is a real issue, particularly if you bear in mind it's not just, you know, Humelink, there are all these other transmission projects that are behind. So look at the combined effect of all of those and that's something that worries us. So they would have looked at the cost and they would look at the delay and they would have thought, well, it's probably not a profitable path to take.
And in terms of the, obviously, this is very crude and rule of thumb, but if the AER essentially says, we will allow you to, I mean, the AER doesn't fund this, it's, it's, it's a provision for the network to claw back from the retailers, is that correct? A, a portion of money to fund the capital works programme?
Let's see. Yes, the networks would charge the retailers, who in turn would charge their customers.
So would it be fair to say that there's a fairly consistently, consistent ratio of maybe one to one flow through direct to electricity prices? So the evidence we heard this morning, or sorry, earlier today from, from TransGrid was that ballpark, you're talking about two to three times the cost. Does that mean that the, the quantum of that increase, the two to three times, would flow directly into electricity prices, more or less?
It would increase the transmission component of electricity prices, which would be recovered from consumers, but transmission is a fairly small part of the overall bill.
Okay. So what, 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 what percentage, Mr Cox, roughly, is the transmission component?
Can't, sorry, can't say offhand. We'll, perhaps we can get you some accurate figures on that.
Sure.
Yeah, but I mean, but ballpark, probably 10%, but I can be wrong about it.
So if we're talking about, let's say we've got an electricity bill of 5,000 per annum, of that 5,000, perhaps 10%, which is what, $500?
Yes.
So you could, you could theoretically, you could be talking about a, of that $500, a, a percentage increase of the cost flows directly through to that 5,000?
Yeah, I mean, that, I think that's fair comment, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Oh, maybe if I could just ask one. I'm looking at the responses that the AER gave in terms of supplementary questions. And paraphrasing greatly in terms of the regulatory investment test, down at the bottom of your, your first response, you say, we also consider the long term interests of consumers. Can you tell me what methodology you use to determine that?
Yes. I mean, long term means more than just the short term, but it doesn't exclude the short term. I think the short term is part of the, the long term. It means that we look at issues of quality, supply, reliability, security, environmental sustainability, as well as price. So, I mean, there isn't a formula that brings all those things together, but we do have to look at those things. And we do think about future consumers as well as current consumers. So it's a number of things that we have to pay attention to.
So that would also obviously include the actual cost to consumers of electricity?
Oh, yes, yeah, certainly in their interest.
What weighting would you give that?
I wouldn't want to give a numerical weighting, but it is an important, very important consideration in all our recent decisions.
Is there something written down about this methodology?
Or was it the vibe?
There's, I mean, I just think there's probably something from the Australian Energy Market Commission on the meaning of the long term interest of consumers, which we can find for you. So, I mean, it's more than the vibe, but it's not a numerical formula.
Not quite, okay, thank you.
Mr Cox, thank you for appearing again today. I just wondered if you could possibly, in the very little time we have left, just elaborate more, you mentioned about the costs may have increased since that RITT test was originally done, but the benefits may have also increased based on a shift to renewables? If you could talk more about what those benefits might be?
Check with my colleagues to see whether that's benefits have increased as well as costs, if we could have more information. Okay, we'll take it on notice. The answer seems to be probably yes.
Thank you, Mr Cox.
Thank you very much.
Look, that, any more questions for anyone? No. Look, that, that very much concludes our questions for today. Thank you again for giving evidence and attending the hearing. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, be returned within three days. The secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. That concludes the public hearing for this inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you, committee, very much.